Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alex Neve, one of the four commissioners. Two of us being here together this afternoon. Leilani will introduce herself in a moment. I'm actually joining you unusually, I'm joining you from Toronto today. And so first wanted to begin, we do always begin with a land acknowledgement. So I guess I'll slightly modify it to first acknowledge that I am myself joining from Dish with One Spoon territory here in Toronto today. But that very significantly, the Ottawa People's Commission itself, both its virtual presence and certainly where all of this played out is on unceded Algonquin Anishnaabik territory. And I would very much like us to begin by acknowledging that. But not only acknowledging it, really understanding and embracing how important that is in the context of what this is all about because as the title of the commission indicates, this is about an occupation, an occupation of Ottawa, of downtown Ottawa for three and a half weeks in February. An occupation of lands, lands that are unceded and unsurrendered. And it's and it's been very important to us that as we go through this process, as we hear from people, as we deliberate about what the convoy's impact entailed, that we're always remembering that, that the lands that we're talking about are the lands of the Algonquin Anishnaabik people. And that also points to another very important dimension of what this inquiry is all about. And that's human rights. Everything about what happened in February is about human rights. Certainly, the right to protest is a human right. The actions of police in responding to the protest involve a range of human rights concerns. But very importantly for us in the context of our commission process, we are keeping in mind that there's an essential human rights framework that applies to the people of Ottawa, the residents of downtown Ottawa, the people who work and who pass through those neighborhoods. Rights with respect to housing and livelihood and healthcare and education and and the right to be free from cruel treatment and forms of treatment that might even be tantamount to torture and many other human rights concerns. And I think you'll see that as we pose a lot of our questions and as we hear from people throughout the commission process, that those considerations are very much on our mind. This is about the community impact of the convoy occupation. And I really want to begin by emphasizing that this is not a venue where we come together to debate vaccine science or air our agreements or disagreements around public health masking protocols. Those conversations, important as they are, happen elsewhere. We're focused on just two things. The community, so we are hearing from people who are not from elsewhere, but who live and work in the community that was affected by the convoy. And we're here to hear about impact. Not whether people agreed that the convoy was a good thing or a bad thing, but what was his impact, positive or negative on people's daily lives. And we certainly look forward to that this afternoon as well. This commission is a key element of how the community has responded to the disruption and the harms of last winter's occupation that had such an impact on so many residents and businesses. And there's two fundamental goals that are at the heart of why the commission was established and how we're going forward with our work. And that is that this be a venue for healing and that be a venue for justice. And we achieve those goals by hearing the stories of those who were impacted the most, hear about what they went through, hear about their engagement with convoy participants, their engagement with police and government, their engagement with other community members. And of course, at the end of the day, we will draw upon what we've heard. Not just our own views and opinions, draw upon what we've heard. And from that formulate recommendations so that something like this would not happen in this way again. We've had, I think about nine or 10 sessions now, a mix of online sessions as we are this afternoon and some sessions that have been held in person. We've been doing that since about the third week of September. We've also been holding a number of community consultations, which as opposed to the model we'll be using this afternoon of hearing individually from a number of folks, one after the other. We have groups that come together and have a conversation in and amongst ourselves. And those have been focused on groups that were particularly impacted by the convoy, including Asian seniors, women living in shelters, the 2SLGBTQI+ community. And there are also plans to have sessions with the Indigenous community, the Muslim community, the Black community and others. We've also been receiving a considerable number, I think, well over seventy-five written submissions now as well. So there's an extensive body of information coming together. And we very much look forward to building on that this afternoon. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to my colleague Leilani Farha, who's going to tell us a little bit more about how we're going to proceed this afternoon.
Thanks so much, Alex. And that was such a good and succinct summary of where we are to date and the raison d'etre of this People's Commission. I'm Leilani Farha and I'm a human rights lawyer. I've worked internationally and domestically, and I'm based in Ottawa on this unceded territory that Alex spoke of. So I want to just say one thing about my understanding of this commission and its significance. Many will know that there really hasn't been until this commission an opportunity for people to just have their say of their experiences during those three or so weeks earlier at the beginning of this year. And these sorts of people-driven and people-oriented processes are so important for our democracy, for the health of our democracy. And so Alex and I and our fellow commissioners take this process very seriously, though we're doing it ultimately in a voluntary capacity. Our intention is to really help as this country goes forward to be able to provide some solid recommendations should something like this arise again, an occupation or a very fulsome protest, the likes of which we saw in Ottawa earlier this year. For today, I don't want to be labor thing, so we should get moving so that we can hear your testimonies. I think there are five of you who will be speaking today. We'll take you each in turn. We ask that your preliminary comments be approximately five minutes. Alex and I will likely have a few questions that we'll ask you. The questions will very much be focused on the implications and impact of the actual occupation on you and your ability to protest or to go grocery shopping, whatever it is. So with that, I think we should just start right into the hearings. And I think Gail knows who's up first. And so we welcome you.
Hi there. Sorry, I was waiting for an introduction, but I wasn't sure I was up next. So thank you very much. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, commissioners and members of the public. You can hear me okay? Great. So thank you for accepting my request to provide my testimony today. My name is Beth Blackmore. I am a lifetime Ottawa resident, mother, wife, and until a year ago, an HR professional with the Canadian federal government. So I'd like to weave a question into my testimony this afternoon for your reflection. And that question is, why did they come? Why did the truckers feel they had no choice but to drive thousands of miles across the country in the dead of winter to descend on the nation's capital? So a year ago, November twenty twenty-one, I was an acting team leader of recruitment with the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. Our team was responsible for including the new condition of employment for COVID vaccinations within the job posters and offer letters. I, however, knew my fate. I knew that by not disclosing my private medical status, that my employer would force me on leave after seventeen years of service. My last day of work was December eighth, twenty twenty-one. Those of us not complying with the mandates retreated as second-class citizens, livelihoods lost, businesses closed, banned from traveling internationally, let alone within our own country's borders. We were banned from fitness gyms, restaurants, movie theaters, concerts, sports teams, ski hills, family and friend gatherings. Still to this day, many unvaccinated healthcare workers are out of jobs. Some children still require COVID vaccinations for team sports and activities. Many people are refused healthcare, organ transplants, visits with elderly in long-term care. And I'm sure there are many other relevant examples. So our Canadian government instituted mandates over an entire population with a new medical treatment that is still in clinical trials and was never tested to stop transmission. Our lives have been affected in a profoundly existential way over these discriminatory and segregating mandates. Our livelihoods, our very existence as human beings, has been manipulated and threatened. The Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms protects the most basic rights of individual Canadian citizens against any overreach by government. I know we can all agree that all citizens should be treated equally. Equality rights are at the core of the charter. Our charter rights, our civil liberties, were completely ignored. Freedom of assembly, freedom of movement, freedom of speech, personal bodily autonomy, the right to work and more, were just brushed aside and never challenged in an open discourse. So for me, by mid-January, I was feeling pretty hopeless. I remember thinking that the nation's capital had to be the worst place to live as far as strict COVID restrictions were concerned. It was indeed the capital city of compliance, with public servants tucked away, working in their homes, earning their consistent pay, receiving annual increases and compensation for home office setup. As a whole, the public service workforce that dominates this city's industry was very much immune from the fallout of the government's lockdowns and overreach. Meanwhile, any business deemed nonessential was told to shut their doors as they were cast aside. So rumors of a convoy were starting to circulate and momentum was building for a huge presence in Ottawa with efforts being coordinated with the authorities. It seemed so hopeful in such a dark time of never-ending lockdowns, mandates, segregation and strained relationships. After two years of miserable and unnecessary restrictions and mandates, a group of truckers rallied to have their voices heard. We were told by our prime minister and echoed by mainstream media that these people were ill-informed, anti-science, ignorant bigots who did not deserve our tolerance. Our PM denounced the protesters even before they arrived. However, I will never forget the feeling I had on Friday, January twenty-eighth, on the Bruin Street Bridge overpass as the semis started to descend on the city's west end on Highway four sixteen, adorned with Canadian flags and signs of freedom. In absolutely freezing temperatures, the crowd huddled together, ignited by the undeniable hope and optimism that our voices would finally be heard. It's hard to put into words my experience of participating in the Freedom Convoy in downtown Ottawa. There was this air of hope surrounding us. Finally, people who just wanted freedom of choice were assembling together and felt free for the first time in two years. People from all walks of life congregated with big smiles across their faces. Strangers were literally hugging and crying and expressing such relief that finally we might be respected and heard. Everyone was so appreciative of the truckers for their efforts and commitment in the name of freedom. I personally drove down multiple times with friends, family and multiple times alone. I've never felt safer walking the streets of downtown Ottawa. A few times I ventured down at night to take in what I refer to as hopium. I participated in the Adopt a Trucker program. We hosted truckers and their wives, as well as freedom fighting, a freedom fighter accompanying the convoy from Thunder Bay. We provided meals, showers, laundry to the brave truckers in appreciation for their sacrifice. One of my favorite convoy days happened to be a quieter weekday. A friend and I had dropped off food and made our way to the intersection of Sussex and Rito, where a small, snow-covered street dance party formed. We found ourselves smiling, dancing and hugging complete strangers, some of whom were intoxicated, homeless, Indigenous. In that moment, I recognized that I felt more akin to the so-called oppressed outcasts of society than I did to my white-collar professional associates. I drove my vehicle down to the convoy most days and had no problem driving right down to the convoy itself. Many streets remained open, not just for emergency vehicles. Often if I was bringing food, toiletries, hygiene products, returning clean laundry or bringing a Costco cake for one of the truckers' birthdays, I could easily manage to drive right down Bank Street to Queen Street and park amongst the convoy and easily get out to return home. There were detours in place, but definitely navigable and honestly more efficient than driving on a busy weekday pre-COVID. Unfortunately, the mayor and city officials deterred the public from going downtown and worse deterred business owners from opening their businesses, stating that it was a hostile environment and unsafe for the public. I deliberately went out of my way to support businesses that opened their doors. Even though food donations were abundant, many of the truckers preferred to support local business and chose to eat at restaurants that remained open. So while I acknowledge that there were inconveniences that the Freedom Convoy brought to the nation's capital, we must remember why they came. They didn't come to personally inconvenience anyone. They came for dialogue and to be heard, much like what OPC's purposes. People's livelihoods were at stake and human rights were being trampled with the implementation of the mandates. The truckers traveled all the way to Ottawa to give political expression to their stand on COVID mandates. And where else should they have gone? Ottawa, as so many seem to forget, is the nation's capital and should be the center of Canadian democracy. I'd also like to point out that the big claims that smeared the Freedom Convoy in a negative light were simply not true. The convoy overall was not dangerous, not violent and wasn't foreign-funded. We know there were no guns, no money coming in from foreign actors and no threats to national security. And still, there were no measures taken to address the people's concerns or attempt to negotiate. Not once did the prime minister offer an opportunity for a meeting or delegate ministers to have a discussion. The PM treated them like invaders, not a representative group of Canadian citizens with relevant concerns. All of our hopes of finally being heard were dashed. Government leaders had no response whatsoever. They just accused the protesters of bigotry and turned a blind eye. State-funded and legacy media didn't do the convoy any favors. The movement was smeared. The protesters painted as so immoral that government had no obligation to listen to them. So from no communication whatsoever to the Emergencies Act, the invocation of the EA quite literally trampled on our civil and human rights with police using brute force against a peaceful people and freezing bank accounts of convoy supporters. It was politically motivated to preserve power and protect themselves, which quite honestly destroyed an important pillar of our democracy, the right to protest and assemble. Democracy has been shattered in this country with the government's vaccine mandates, creating a two-tiered society with no room for dissenting voices. The Freedom Convoy was a justified expression of political challenge. It was based on legitimate grounds. Fortunately, due to the sheer size and enormity of the Freedom Convoy, it successfully evolved into a global movement that finally gave us a voice on the international stage, even if our own government dismissed our voices. The truckers and the protesters were merely trying to be heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth. Alex, do you want to go first? I reckon you have some questions.
Sure, thanks, Leilani. And thank you very much for sharing that, Beth. It was very clear and very well put. Maybe just one clarifying question for me first. You referred to driving in and out of downtown. I'm not asking you to disclose where you live, but can you give us a sense as to maybe kind of what part of the city you live in?
Yeah, so I'm in the west end. And so I would take the Queen's Way downtown. I believe I would go right down to Kent, to Somerset, to Bank. So I know on Kent Street, yes, it was quite blocked up, almost all the way to Somerset. Or Gladstone, maybe. But Bank Street was free most of the way downtown to the core. And then from Bank Street, I turned left on Queen Street and I was able to make it down quite easily.
And so where you live in the west end, would you have heard the horns from there?
No. No.
And did you have an opportunity to have any engagement with people who did live right in center town who were enduring the horn honking and get any sense from them as to what that was like?
Yes. So my husband has a colleague who lives right downtown and was definitely, you know, his life was impacted by the honking of the horns. And I appreciate that. I acknowledge that. I understand that those residents, you know, that that was a huge burden on them with the honking of the horns, the diesel fumes, you know, for that period of time.
And now you did acknowledge that this was a source of, I think the word you used was inconvenience for people living centrally. We've heard from about fifty people now. And I think they would want to say back to you that this was much more than inconvenience. And certainly, a lot talk about literally feeling terrorized and trapped in their apartments have shared with us accounts of being accosted, including physically, by protesters when they were out on the streets, often simply because they were wearing a mask and a whole variety of other feelings of fear, but also of having experienced something that they would certainly describe as as abuse or violence, much more than inconvenience. Do you have a sense of that? Did you have an opportunity during any of your trips downtown to engage with community members and hear that perspective?
So I did not see that personally. And I do not want to discount that that was their experience. I wasn't there to see that. I recognize that if that was their experience, that's very unfortunate. And charges should be laid, right? I believe that, you know, they should not have been subjected to that kind of behavior. I did not see that at all. In fact, you know, when I went down, it honestly, this environment, me, was peace and love. It was life-changing for me. And anyone that were participating down there, I believe, had the same feeling. And so, you know, a couple of bad acts. So I feel like it's unfair to paint the whole Freedom Convoy as violent and in a negative light, because that is not what I saw when I went down there multiple times. And I did see people with masks down there. I see people with masks all the time. And I don't think it's about berating them because they're wearing masks. And I didn't see any of that when I was down there, when there were people amongst the crowd with masks on. It is freedom of choice. And my understanding is that was the whole mantra of the Freedom Convoy, was freedom of choice.
Well, I mean, I don't think that anyone necessarily would disagree with you of, you know, it's not appropriate and inaccurate to describe it in any way, you know, the whole convoy was X, Y, or Z. But certainly, there were a lot of people who had those kinds of experiences. There was one other thing I wanted to ask you that caught my ear as you were saying it. You were talking about your sense, your assessment that the convoy wasn't dangerous. The convoy wasn't violent. And you said, we know there were no guns. And I was just wondering if you could say a little bit more about that, because I've never heard a definitive sort of final say on that. And I guess one of the reasons I ask is not so much, you're not in a position any more than I'm in a position to be able to give a conclusive answer to that question. But one of the things we've heard from a lot of residents is that one of the sources of their fear and terror was things like, were there guns? And also fears around things like all the propane tanks being moved around and, you know, stored in trucks or beside trucks and open flames. And all of that giving people a feeling in the community where they lived, where their kids lived, where they were in and out of their apartments of what's there, what could suddenly become a source of an explosion or a source of violence? So I'm wondering if you could say a little bit more about why it is that you felt confident in saying, we know there were no guns?
Well, first of all, because there hasn't been any charges laid for for people that had guns. And also with the inquiry that's going on right now, there hasn't been any discussion or confirmation that there were guns down there. So I mean, I suppose like you, I don't know for sure until everything is dealt with, but that's my opinion. That's my impression.
Like I say, you can understand why that would be a source of, I guess, at its mildest, nervousness for residents. And at a further extreme, maybe a source of real fear, sort of not knowing and just having that sense of worry.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Beth. Those are my questions. Over to you, Leilani.
Thanks, Beth. And I'll reiterate what Alex said. You were very clear and it was very helpful to hear what you had to say in such a straightforward way. I just have a few questions. Let's take the period right up until the Emergencies Act was invoked, so before it was invoked.
Yes.
You say that you had the opportunity to protest in the way that you wanted to during those three weeks. Like you described being able to get downtown, you could get right to the convoy. Were there, you know, were you able to exercise your right to protest during that time? Would you say?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And I wanted to know if you, okay, so I live in the west end as well. And I heard some horns, but not all of them for sure. But when you were down there, were you there at times when the horns were all going?
Yes.
Yeah. And could you imagine, I mean, you've had a long career and presumably up until the point at which you were unemployed, presumably you were forced to do what so many of us were doing, which were these horrible Zoom calls.
Right.
You know, et cetera. So could you imagine having heard those horns and having been right there, can you imagine being able to attend a Zoom call or do your work or be a student studying for exams, et cetera, with those horns going on?
No, I believe that that would be challenging.
Right. And can you see then why some people might say therefore it wasn't so peaceful?
Yes, of course. I can. Yes, this was an extreme measure for something that, you know, a lot of us have been fighting for for a long time. So yes, I appreciate and I acknowledge that Ottawa residents, especially downtown in the red zone, would have been not only inconvenienced, but, you know, I appreciate that. And yes.
Yeah, just a follow-up question to that. To your knowledge, did any of the truckers, when they parked their trucks, for example, right outside of apartment buildings, did any of them inquire as to whether there were people with disabilities living in those units who might therefore not be able to access the things that they might need to survive? Did they ever, like, did they make sure not to park in front of, you know, in apartment buildings, how they have those ramps up from the underground garage? Were they careful to ensure not to infringe on the rights of the residents in the red zone? Because what we heard was those laneways were blocked, like people couldn't get out of their garages. We heard that paratranspo couldn't access people living in units, people with disabilities. We heard people couldn't access food, medicines, couldn't reach medical appointments, including chemotherapy. um appointments, including chemotherapy appointments, et cetera. So I'm just wondering, to your knowledge, did the truckers try to prevent the violation of of other people's rights while they were exercising their rights?
I don't believe that they tried to infr- infringe on anyone's rights like that at all and the ones that I met.
My question wasn't whether they tried to infringe. My question was, did they take any steps to ensure they weren't infringing?
I don't know. I don't know. Um, a- all I know is that my understanding is that they were working with authorities, police knew well in advance of them coming to Ottawa. So a- and the way like I I I'm also aware that they were told where to park. Um, when they came in, right? There was um there was information about which routes they should be taking, where they can be parking. Uh, so that's all I I can offer to that question.
No, that's that's actually very helpful, because I I didn't know exactly whether the police were saying, you can park here, go park.
I'm pretty sure that they were directing things and I, that's my understanding.
That's helpful. And I just have one last question. You mentioned when you, when the convoy first came and you had this like rush of like, wow, you know, finally you felt part of s- something that that had been with you for a long time. You mentioned seeing the Canadian flag.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if you saw any other flags besides the Canadian flag?
Um, so, yeah, I mean, the the um popular F Trudeau flag was 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 abound.
Right.
Um, I didn't see the swastika. I did not see the Confederate flag and I'm not saying it wasn't there, but I believe it may have been there for a short time before being asked by protesters to leave the area. I don't believe it was a multi, um, i- it didn't happen more than once, from my understanding. And I think citizen journalists and protesters down there would have captured that and and um and and asked them to leave, because that that is not part of this freedom movement.
Okay, thank you. Th- those are my questions.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks so much, Beth.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I don't have a list, so I can't, and I I don't know what names people are going by. So if the next person is ready to um offer their testimony, we're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Um, thanks for, I'm, I'm I'm a bit nervous, so I don't do this every day.
No, of course, of course. Take a breath, it's all good.
Yeah. So thanks for giving me an opportunity to to be heard and for all uh all people who do speak up uh today and in the commission. I am a Gattino resident and um I have no antecedent criminal or whatever of any sort. I'm a responsible citizen and a twenty-five year of experience federal civil servant um, in a department who uh usually defends the rights of minorities, uh mostly abroad. And so um, like Beth, I did refuse to attest uh when the Vax policy came out, regardless of my Vax status, which belongs between myself and my family doctor. So after the Me Too movement, the My Body, My Choice movement, and all the feminist um, steps and efforts that I was very much appalled by all the pressure, the intimidation, the discrimination and the coercitive measures put in place by my own employer, as well as by provincial and federal governments. So I was now uh unemployed. And I had never ever participated in any demonstration before two thousand twenty-two. And I am not an activist nor militant for any cause. So I'm, I was pretty new to this. Um, my experience in Ottawa was in three different occasions, two during the day and one at night. I have never witnessed as much solidarity, care, hope, respect, bienveillance, sorry for the French term, and peaceful festivities. The cleanliness, the abundance of food, the peaceful discussions and the warmth, although we were in the cold winter months, was impressive, to say the least. The police officers I came across were very relaxed and respectful as they were um, walking in the streets. And um, to um, to respond to the main question of the the commission, in my experience, the trauma for me preceded this event. The trauma was the months before where my job was lost, uh, where I had to make decisions that were very difficult and that implied uh myself and my family. And the convoy as a result was part of the healing for me. There was hope, as Beth also mentioned earlier. I understand or believe that the three-week inconvenience and, I guess, occasional uh reports of residents being um treated as they were um is a response to not being heard in the months prior to that. So it's come, it comes back to why the protesters and the truckers were there. Because they did question what was, what was going on and were not heard. Um, the fact that I'm speaking anonymously right now is a result of that trauma. And it will continue to be until perhaps the gravity uh of what happens is recognized. Because um, I feel we were uh, not only discriminated, but we were humiliated, ridiculed. Um, I mean, I've, I've never thought I would go through such um an experience in my life. I did offer um housing to visitors and volunteers of the convoy, people that were like super normal people with kids. Um, they were um, they, they were coming to see for themselves what was going on. Uh, so I felt, doing this, I felt really like and I don't want to be um, it doesn't speak to the past, the the events of the history. It speaks of a feeling that I had when I did offer housing for these people. I felt like part of a resistance that was you know, I had to be silent, I had to hide, I had to not speak out because, I mean, the the consequences were too high. And um to to, I guess, conclude, I'm a single mom of two kids um in shared custody and for me, this, um choosing to lose my job was uh, it was more important for me to stand up for my values. Although it was really difficult. Because I teach to my kids that intimidation and cons- like forcing consent is a big no. So I teach that to them and I had to act accordingly. And this is, you know, why for me support the convoy. Although I don't just, I I I do recognize what, you know, uh, people in the streets of Ottawa residents may have gone through. Um, that's my personal uh experience and I am a hundred percent with Beth on what she eloquently uh said. Um, and thanks for your time and the opportunity to to be heard.
Thank you very much. And um, I can hear how upset you are and I can imagine it was difficult for you to provide us with your testimony and it is much appreciated. Um, Alex, I'll turn to you if you want any question, to ask any questions.
Sure, thank you. And 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 I reiterate the thanks as well, especially um, you've clearly shared something that is, that is, that is very fundamental and very personal to you and 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 very emotional and and we respect and appreciate you doing that in 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 a public venue. Uh, it's, it's certainly very important to us. Um, so, uh, so I I absolutely am hearing and 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 very much accept uh, your experience of the 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 very fact that the convoy was happening. Uh, but also your, your own engagements with the convoy, whether it be the times you uh, went downtown or or through the the participants you were hosting at your home. Um, was a, was a source of of something very positive for you. You've um, you've noted uh that you you kind of understand that there was uh inconvenience and um for for people in downtown Ottawa. Uh, I'm wondering eh, how how much of an opportunity did you have to to hear about that or uh or appreciate it uh when you went downtown? Did you, did you have any opportunities to talk with with residents and and hear what their experience was, for instance?
Um, I mean, no, not directly, meaning that I didn't, you know, ring at residence uh place. Now, I I crossed people, I don't know where they were from, some were identified as coming from elsewhere in Canada. Um, so I, I mean, I haven't seen any discontent while I was personally there. It was a very joyful, peaceful, hopeful uh spirit. I, I mean, it was something, I it was very impressive. So I'm not saying that it did not exist. I'm just saying that I I did not witness that. Um, and the people I I happen to have talked to who went there have a similar experience as mine, but again, um, what I I although wanted to mention, and it's more on a um, I have a bit of a, well, um, not therapist background, but I I I'm really interested in 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 people and conflict resolution. And if we go back in the context at that time, I mean, whether you were on one side or the other, people were um divided. They were intolerant and impatient. I mean, we were everyone at a place where we, we didn't want to be really being isolated and working from home or whatever. So I'm just saying that if I would have been a resident of Ottawa and be um, whatever my plan, I, I don't say that I wouldn't have been um annoyed by the activity around. I mean, it's just human. I mean, the, there was something going on bigger than what you could have imagined, probably. Hello?
Uh, I think that was our colleague, uh, Robert. Robert, I think you're on, you, maybe you need to mute your microphone. There we go.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing is a a typical human um behavior is when we're already at a stage where we're irritated. Um, it it is, it's not unusual to see people being more, you know, confrontational if something happens. So and and the the tension in the society, I'm not saying in the, I didn't feel the tension, it was probably the the more tensionless place I've been during the the COVID, the episode. But the tension in the society was was really high. And I think it's just normal that the residents um were irritated and whether they could, they supported the convoy or not. Uh, they happened to live in the Canada's capital. We are known for our peace, are known for our openness and collaboration, which for now, I, I mean, has been sort of suspended. Um, but my, my feeling was that we we never expected something like that would happen in the streets of Ottawa, but it's still the national capital and protests do happen once in a while. I don't know about that in details, but um, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, for them to to live there. But it's sort of a consequence of of what happened.
And I, you know, I wouldn't want to um speak for uh for uh the residents um of Ottawa. I'm a resident of Ottawa myself, but but the residents of Center Town. But we've been hearing from many of them. And 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 I think I would want you to know that uh, a great number of people who have testified in front of us have quite eloquently spoken about how fiercely they believe in the right to protest. Uh, and, and actually, just as you've put it, um, very much understand that that comes with living in a capital city and and certainly very much comes with living in the central part of the capital city. But then would go on to describe how this was something completely beyond that, the um, that that this wasn't just about irritation and inconvenience, this was about about harm, uh, even violence, um intolerance, expressions of hatred. Now, I know your uh, your own experience didn't see any of that, but I guess, maybe I'm just, would ask, be interested in what your reflection is on on knowing that. And I'm sure you've seen media coverage, et cetera, in which you've seen those accounts. Um, how do you, how do you situate that with your feeling that this was something overwhelmingly positive?
Mate, that, that's the whole thing about COVID. I think it's, and the the convoy, it's, it um, it's a duality. There's something in the division that, I mean, very few people spoke up, very few government officials spoke up to 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 work together. It's like, as we had known Canada and just say, and and, you know, let's talk and we'll get through this. No, that it was a a completely different approach and it divided people. So to hear on mainstream media, uh, government official asking uh to denounceate neighbors because they, I don't know, do what in terms of measures. I mean, there was a whole um, society division that I find is very, uh, it's very logical that um, some probably, not logical. What I want to see is the tension being what it was, the residents and the protester, I mean, it's, I I find that, that same division probably uh took over for whatever um reason. And it's, I I'm not saying that I caution that and I I agree with that, but I'm just, it's a fact that tensions were high and conflict do happen in these uh things and people are not always very well, um, um, I mean, do not deal with their anger and and ideas and opinion. We have seen that. We see that all the time on social media. So it's just a ref- I think it's just a reflection of the social climate that happened. And it's unfortunate that as a person, they had to go through this. I'm not, like, I recognize that totally and, I mean, uh, but if, yeah.
Okay, no, and thank you for for sharing that. Uh, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm not sure that I have another question. I think um in another world, I would love to sit with you and talk about those tensions um, divisions that you were seeing, because um, one of the things that we've heard from many residents is that they too were making very hard choices around vaccinations, vaccinations for their children, masking for themselves, masking for their children. And um, then a convoy comes. Many of them, many people had lost jobs or were in precarious employment as a result of the COVID and the way in which um governments were dealing with it, et cetera. And their experience was therefore quite similar to your own. The difference was that they didn't want a protest or didn't want to be part of a protest and in fact were gravely impacted by the protest. So I just think that it's interesting. I don't, I don't necessarily see the do- divisions. I think that's, might be a false narrative, but in any event, that's for perhaps a conversation somewhere else. Um, at another, at another time. Um, I appreciate very much your, your having spent um, some time with us to convey um your, your position. Um, so thank you very much and and I hope you have a a nice evening.
Thank you.
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay. That, am I up? Yeah, okay. I um, I have this written out completely and if I were talking to you directly rather than on a screen, which I I would have appreciated, because I think the important discussions as I'm sure most agree, need to be face to face. And the more important, the more important it is to be face to face, but I know time is, this time it's not always easy to do that. Um, anyways, I thank you very much for the uh opportunity to present. And uh, I actually messed it And uh I actually messed it up a little bit at the beginning, because I didn't respond to some things, but. That might be related to my old age. I do live in Centertown. Uh, I've lived here for thirty four years and I've lived in Ottawa for, I don't know, forty five or something like that. I am a retired physician and I'm stating that partly because. Uh, about certain things, it might give me a bit more credibility. And uh I also consider myself an honest person, uh I also think I'm observant. And uh I. Don't even know what this means exactly, but I, it's sort of like pornography, you recognize it when you see it. And that is, I don't feel that I have an agenda. Um, enough about me, but I'll answer any questions uh in 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 a few moments. I wrote this all down, as I said, and I was gonna read it, but because of the two previous speakers. A few of my ideas have changed a little bit, I actually haven't changed my mind on anything, but it's made me think of some other issues. Um, but I still am gonna try to read most of it uh as written. I do live. Uh, close to the uh area, I could actually hear the trucks uh and uh. It didn't even have to be all that loud to hear them, so I can understand that it would be. Quite annoying, particularly for the length of time that it went on, if you were right downtown. It did not affect me at all, uh but I'm gonna come back to that a little bit in a moment. I uh also did observe, I went down on a number of occasions, because I live so close and I. Uh, will say that I initially was very much a supporter of the convoy. And um I uh certainly, the first day that I went down, I was definitely a protester and um. And I had the occasion to uh talk with many of the protesters. I did not talk to any uh people from Ottawa that were. That were complaining or out of sorts or anything like that, and nor did I with the. Uh, even my neighbors and other people, they were not affected by anything, but then we're five blocks from, you know, Centertown. Like like from where it was all happening. Uh, in any case, um. I uh I know that there was a a bit of inappropriate behavior for sure. And uh that did occur even on the first day. But. I also recognized that the trucks, as they started to accumulate, would be a major problem. They likely were not going to go away quietly, and even with immediate cooperative removal, it would have taken many hours to clear the traffic. And uh certainly, even by force, it would have taken several days. Even if everything went smoothly, obviously, the police, because of the situation they found themselves in. Uh, needed a plan, and that was gonna take a little bit of time to institute it. Thus, it became a major issue. All protests are somewhat destructive and obstructive, and depending on the size of the protest, those things will increase. Initially, very little, what I would say, uh inappropriate behavior, but there were certainly some individuals. That were obviously present to cause trouble, rather than to protest. There were a few inappropriate signs and certainly some inappropriate. Symbols, which are slightly different than signs, in my opinion. Uh, there was what I would call some crude behavior, certainly on some of the signage, is the first speaker today mentioned some of those signs. Uh, which I feel are inappropriate, but they're certainly. Uh, depending on degree, are not uh unnatural at a protest, I would think. I estimate that I visited at least five times and I actually spent a bit of time uh each time I went through. Uh, I never uh felt intimidated. Per se, I didn't feel unsafe, I was there in the daytime, I was there at night. Uh, and I did not feel threatened, mind you, I'm I'm a. I think I'd refer to as a super senior, but I'm actually physically pretty well and uh. So I, but I, you know, I'm not, I didn't feel threatened at all. Um, I did feel that the uh noise was uh certainly would be very annoying. And actually, as time went on, I also felt that the presence of the trucks. Which, of course, actually could be used and have been used in some demonstrations as lethal weapons. Uh, they were to uh, to say the least, they were a bit intimidating, no question about that. However, it's certainly, in my opinion, was a friendly atmosphere. What I really want to talk about is a little bit what the first speaker talked about. And because I feel that it is very important when you discuss. Uh, protests. One has to discuss the reason for the protest, so it's kind of told, well, we're not, in fact, I appreciate what Alex, if I may call him Alex. Uh, said at the beginning, I appreciated his introduction, that this is really not about whether. Uh, vaccines work or don't work or anything to do with that, however. I would actually uh disagree, because I feel that if. All of the people of Ottawa had supported the convoy right from the get go. And if the prime minister had not demonized all the protesters before they even got to town. There first of all, would have been a much different uh atmosphere and a and a different attitude. Uh, in in parts, in my opinion. I also feel that if they had all agreed. With the protesters, they would have tolerated a lot more inconvenience without complaint. Now, unfortunately, because it went on for a period of, what, three weeks? The situation actually did deteriorate in the trucks and the noise and the pollution. And, you know, gas tanks being moved around, you know, it had to be very distressing for the population, I do not question that. I personally didn't feel all that distressing, just because I wasn't quite that close, plus the fact that. Uh, it didn't affect me as directly, but I definitely would not have wanted it in my backyard. Uh, um. The uh. I just want to address the fact that it was called Freedom Convoy. It was unfortunately a bit confusing of what they stood for, but the one thing that I will say is that they seem to have. Hundreds of thousands of supporters as they came across the country. Unfortunately, when they got to Ottawa, they didn't have any supporters uh in Ottawa, in in central Ottawa, or very few. Um. In any case, uh I think it caused a point, it's very, very important as to uh tolerance of them. Um, I. I'm off script a bit because I'm thinking of the other speakers, but in any case. Uh, I do not know the legalities of the Quarantine Act, nor the Emergency Act, even though we've heard quite about about that recently. But they both take away our freedoms. And they should be used carefully and for short periods of time. Significant amount of the Quarantine Act, which is supposed to be reviewed. Uh, publicly, I forget what the law says, but it uh I would don't think was reviewed in Ontario. For the two and a half years of the pandemic, which is, in my opinion, completely out of line from a uh. From the use of that act, because uh these. The situation was not as 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 serious for that whole period of time. I don't play it down, because of course, thousands, tens of thousands of people, millions of people died, in any case. Um. I'm sorry, I, okay. Um, okay, so one can argue, though, that the vaccine mandates are illegal, which is being done, was being done by. Brian Peckford, the only living signature of our constitution, who is suing the federal government. Uh, and uh it was recently mooted. Uh, because it's no longer valid, because the vaccines are not mandated. It is noted that the max vaccine mandates are against the Nuremberg Code. Which, of course, is not legally binding. Medically, the vaccines, in my opinion, are not, were not indicated to have vaccine mandates. And that's very different than just encouraging the vaccine. Sadly, most Canadians, in fact, in my opinion, most doctors did not do their homework. They just did what the government and the public health department told us to do. And they, we did it without informed consent. This is how authoritative regimes work. And and I think I'd like to emphasize that definite loss of freedom. We also know that if you create enough fear, we will behave. My final comments actually come from today's citizen. The Ottawa Carlton District School Board had a debate about mask mandates in schools. It is, to quote the paper. In people at the meeting felt threatened. They actually had to call in the police. And the next meeting, in a couple of days, is going to be a virtual meeting. My final word is Ottawa, we have a problem. I then just quickly added a little addendum, we compare ourselves with Americans. They had a president who incited a protest slash rebellion. And we had a prime minister who effectively, in my opinion, shut down a protest. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, um. Maybe I'll lead off, I I only have one question and then Alex will hand over to you. Um, I'm wondering if you could comment on um. Uh, particularly from your vantage of uh having been a physician. Um, could you comment on you your feelings? Uh, about protest when protest is disrupting access to the things we know. Are required for human life, be it food, be it medicines, be it chemo treatments. Um, be be it peace of mind, because for some, we heard some very harrowing testimony of. Um, people suffering depression and the convoy exacerbating that depression and leading to suicidality. I'm just wondering, what would you say about a protest that has that impact as a physician or former physician?
Well, one of the, I mean, that's that's very, very distressing, and one of the uh. Main reasons why that actually happened. Uh, again, my opinion is because of lack of police control. I mean, the the protesters were. Totally breaking the law, they may have been doing it in a friendly fashion, but they were breaking the law. And it was known very early on that they had to be controlled and had to, you know. We had to, we had to shut down the protest, I I I wouldn't even call, I don't even think we had a protest, actually, we had an occupation. Uh, but they tried to have a protest initially. Uh, so I, and I think it's very sad when when that happened, fortunately, we are sophisticated enough society. That uh there are ways and means to try and get around that and they, but they're only a. Certain degree of success and it depends on good neighbors and. You know, all sorts of things that fortunately we we are privileged to have in our society, but yes, no, it's it's a serious problem and I. I'm not putting down what what this protest ended up being, but the protest had absolutely no effect. Because it. It was never really a protest, because. And I'm sure you see what I mean.
Yes. Thank you very much, yeah, thanks, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Alex.
Uh, thank you for this, uh Graham, and uh and I and I appreciate how you how you set it up by, you know, underscoring that you come to this with no agenda. And um and 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 I think have have therefore, I've appreciated the way in which you've you've shared comments or observations, which. This is maybe a simplified way to describe it, but which kind of fall on both sides of of the experience and and the debate. Um, I was actually going to ask you something, um which is kind of in line with what you were just uh commenting on, and that was about. Your observations about the role of the police. Um, and uh I'm interested to hear you you talk about, I think you, to paraphrase it, that, you know, the police probably should have done more. To deal with lawbreaking. Um, it probably won't come as a surprise to you to know that we've heard that repeatedly uh from from other residents of Centertown and. And many have in fact described, sometimes in quite a bit of detail. Attempts they made to uh report an incident, either something that they'd experienced themselves. Uh, or that they had observed, um and and really their their sense of of inaction. And um and a lot of people, therefore, talk about feeling abandoned. Uh, abandoned by the state uh at a at a time of of pretty traumatic stuff happening for them. Um, I'd be interested to maybe hear you, um you share me a bit more about your reflections about. Your sense of where the police were uh in all of this, uh and um. I know I'm rambling on here, maybe and I'll just kind of throw one other particular piece also. Um, picking up on your uh your physician's hat. Is, we've, we've heard a number of times in which. People in in a situation of medical vulnerability, uh disability, mobility challenges. Um, were were significantly impacted and. Uh, and even uh in some instances accosted and harassed by protesters. Um, and you know, does does that concern you, uh maybe in particular as a physician?
Then that definitely can, that concerns me more as a Canadian happening in our country. Uh, because that's, in my opinion, is not, that's not Canada, in fact, I think this whole ordeal. Uh, it's not Canada, at least not the Canada that I know. I fear sometimes it's becoming the Canada, it is becoming the Canada that I don't know, unfortunately. But um, I think that that there's some similarity to to the first question that I received with respect to. Uh, those those persons that are uh. Um, you know, have special needs and and um. Some some disabilities and things like that, they're always at a at a definite disadvantage, there's no question, and you get into this situation. And yeah, I think that, again. Like COVID itself, the people that have got more problems in life. Uh, have more problems when when stresses come along of any sort, and that's just. You know, the unfortunate uh inequality of existence, even though we uh. Can be equal uh as so-called at birth, but um. I also, though, uh unfortunately, did not spend. Any time, because I haven't had the opportunity with my stepson, who is actually a police officer. And I did not discuss this with him and uh some time I will, and I wish perhaps I had before I talked to. Uh, today, uh but I must say, I did not think of that. My own interaction with the police was, uh, you know, they were basically wandering around most of the time and just making certain that. You know, people didn't need help or, like, there did not be, there was. Kind of a passive feeling of of police involvement most of the time that I was there. That they were just kind of supervising to make sure that nothing. Uh. You know, bad was uh going to happen, I didn't see any indication that they were trying to even. Uh, and I didn't. See any of them negotiating with uh with the truckers or anything like that, but I'm sure that they were certainly talking to them, but I was not. Uh, privy to any of that.
Right, uh, thanks so much, uh Graham, that's that's all I had to ask, so thanks so much for being with us.
Thank you for doing it, to you and your colleague.
Thank you very much, Graham. Now, Alex, oops, am I muted? No. As I understand it, we had two more people testifying, but they have not arrived. They're they are no no shows at this point. So I think that means that we can conclude our today's session earlier than intended.
So so thank you, obviously, in particular to our three presenters this afternoon for sharing very helpful, often very personal information. And, you know, as we have said to everyone who's been appearing in front of of the People's Commission, whether, as was the case this afternoon, they're sharing directly or somewhat positive expressions of support for the convoy or expressing their experiences of of harm and 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 fear during the convoy. In all instances, we recognize that it that it is a courageous step to to come forward and and do this publicly. And and that's what this is all about. So very appreciative to the three people we've heard from this afternoon who have joined the impressive list of others who have come forward. It doesn't end here. We still have, I believe, four more upcoming sessions, a mixture of online and and our final session on International Human Rights Day, in fact, December the 10th, which will be in person. We're also continuing to hold a number of of community meetings. Those aren't open to the public. Those are with select community groups and 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 look forward to a number of those as well. And 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 are always open to hearing from more people and certainly to receiving written submissions. You can follow our work. You can find out details about upcoming events. You can certainly follow us on social media. We're on Twitter and Facebook. And we also have a very informative website at opc-cpo.ca. So thank you again to everyone. Thank you, as always, to my wonderful colleague Leilani for for sharing this space with me this afternoon. Thank you so much to Gail and and her team who make this all possible. And and to Robert and the group of volunteers who are so supportive of the People's Commission's work. And of course, as always, thank you so much to the interpreters and and technical support that makes this all possible. It's very important to us that this be available in both languages and and we're very appreciative of that. So on that note, I think we can, oh, and and maybe the the one other thing I would want to say, especially for people who are listening in, we're very conscious of the fact that this can all be very traumatic and re-traumatizing, especially for people who did go through this directly in February. And I, if 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 you have it all found, either today's session or or just in general, are finding matters related to the the convoy occupation, because of course, there's the official RLO inquiry that's out there in the news all the time right now as well. We on our website have a number of very helpful resources, mental health and other resources that we'd be delighted to direct you to. So so please check that out if necessary. And on that note, I think we can wrap it up. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.